All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to call this meeting to order of the Mayor and Commissioners for November the 25th. I'll call this meeting to order. Can I get the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Walker?
Here.
Commissioner Scully?
Here.
Commissioner Arthur Reeth?
Here.
Commissioner Warnock?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Everyone's present.
Will you all rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My pleasure. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Will you all bow your heads for a brief prayer, please? Thank you. Precious God, we come to you tonight on behalf of the Board of the Town of Rising Sun. I hope you will continue to lead this Board in a Christ-like way, God, and lead our town and watch over us all. I pray for the people of Ferguson, Missouri, and the senseless violence that's going on there at this time. May you be with our troops overseas, and may you be with everyone as they travel for the Thanksgiving holiday, and like I said, may you watch over the Town of Rising Sun and be with us all. Amen. First thing on the agenda is approval of minutes for the October 28th Town Meeting. You all received a copy of the October 28th Town Meeting Minutes. Can I get an approval for this meeting minutes?
I will make a motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Thank you. Next is the November the 12th Special Meeting, and that was the USDA meeting that we had, which was very brief. Can I get a motion to approve the November the 12th Special Meeting of USDA closing?
I so motion. I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Thank you. We have a reporting of an executive session from November the 5th, 2014. Town Administrator, do you have those?
Yes, I do. On November 5th, 2014, at 6:30 PM, the Mayor and Commissioners met on the second floor of Town Hall for a closed executive session. The meeting started at 6:30. A motion to open the meeting was made by Commissioner Warnock, seconded by Commissioner Arthur Reeth. All members were present, and the vote to open the meeting was four to zero. A motion to hold an executive session was made by Commissioner Warnock, seconded by Commissioner Arthur Reeth. That vote passed four to zero. The reason for the meeting, as provided for under the Mayor and Open Meetings Act, was for item number one, to discuss personnel, and for item number seven provided under the Act, which is to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice. The topics discussed at the meeting were various personnel and legal issues. The persons present at the meeting was Jay Gullough, the Town Attorney, Kevin Karpinski, the Insurance Company Attorney, Police Chief Francis Peterson, and Town Administrator Calvin A. Bonnenberger, Jr. The actions taken by the elected body at the meeting were none. There were no actions taken. A motion to adjourn the meeting was made by Commissioner Warnock and seconded by Commissioner That vote passed four to zero. To leave executive session was made by Commissioner Warnock, seconded by Commissioner Scully. That vote was four to zero. Motion to seal the minutes of the meeting was made by Commissioner Warnock, seconded by Commissioner Scully. That vote passed four to zero. And a motion to adjourn the meeting was put forth by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Warnock, and that motion passed four to zero. The meeting was adjourned at 9:46 PM.
Thank you, Town Administrator. On our public presentations, before I ask WOMAPCO to come up and do their presentation, I did want to say that we did have the Rising Sun Junior Football Champions on our agenda. That's why we moved the meeting up. They had agreed to come on Monday, and then about three hours ago, they canceled. So we are going to plan on attending a banquet and give them, I will be awarding them certificates of merit at that time. But like I said, it was a last-minute thing that they ended up not being able to come. Unfortunately, some of the members of the football team, I guess, are traveling for the Thanksgiving holiday, and they thought they would be able to attend, and then they were not able to attend. So I apologize to those that had to come a little early tonight instead of our regular time of 7:00. With that being said, we'll move forward with our first public presentation, and that is WOMAPCO.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Bill Switek. I am a Senior Planner with WOMAPCO, otherwise known as the Wilmington Area Planning Council. And it looks like we're still getting the PowerPoint loaded up a little bit here. I do have a couple handouts for you, only two, so I'll just pass them one side and one on the other here. Has a little bit more detail. I'm going to be talking about the blue one there, the Regional Transportation Plan.
This one here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So we update our regional transportation plan every four years, and it's basically just time to update the plan. We can go to the next slide. Basically, WOMAPCO is designated as the federal metropolitan planning organization for the Wilmington region, which includes Newcastle County and Cecil County in Maryland. We are designated for regional transportation planning, so any of the big transportation projects that have federal funds have to go through WOMAPCO and be part of our long-range plan. Next slide.
Hello?
WOMAPCO is comprised of, number one, the WOMAPCO Council, which is made up of different elected officials, appointed officials from both states, municipalities, and so forth. That council is supported by staff like myself. And you can see underneath the council, it's supported by a number of different committees that involve Public Advisory Committee, and also a Technical Advisory Committee that has some supporting committees under that. Above and beyond, also, the members of the public are a part of WOMAPCO. All of our studies go through an intensive public process, and this plan is just an example of one of them. Next slide. These are just some examples of the core documents at WOMAPCO. You can see the Regional Transportation Plan over there on the left, 20-year plan updated every four years. Under that is what we call our Transportation Improvement Program. That's where the federal funds for major projects are housed. Over there on the right, Congestion Management System. As a heavily populated region, we have to have one of these, so we take a look at the congestion on the highways and try to alleviate that through different mitigation strategies. And then above that, our Unified Planning Work Program is the work program of staff. We've been in the business of long-range planning since 1996, and these are just covers of our long-range plans since that year. Next slide. Why are we updating the plan? And you can click that one more time. Basically, just because the current plan expires in March 2015, and according to the feds, we have to have a new plan every four years. So it's basically just time. We have to have a plan that goes beyond the year 2035 and get it done before March of 2015. Next slide. We're aiming to get this adopted in January. So just to start talking about our long-range plan, we keep track of our past plans through something we call a Regional Progress Report. And basically, the Progress Report is done every two years to see how well the goals and the actions in the plan have progressed. It's a performance-based document, so we use different trends, and it informs the development of the long-range plan. So how did you do in the past, and what things need to change moving forward? So next slide.
It's got a slow trigger.
So I'm going to go over some of the successes that we found in our 2014 report overall in terms of the regional transportation system. Safety is one of the key ones. Of course, highway safety is a major concern in the United States and other countries. It's fairly dangerous overall to drive on the road when you consider it's the highest chance of accidental death in the U.S. About 30,000 people die each year from car crashes. But the good news is that that rate has been declining, even though people are driving more and more. And it just really relates to the safety of cars improving and also the highway infrastructure. Another good story is that lower air quality emissions. Basically, people are driving more and more, but the amount of emissions from ozone and particulate matter have been coming down, again, because the cars are getting cleaner and cleaner. Another thing that's been a good success is our automated tolling adoption, and this is EZPass. So EZPass adoption on our highways, SR-1 and I-95, has increased tremendously over the past 10 years, so it helps the expressways move a little bit better. And also, our public satisfaction with the transportation system has been gaining some traction. So we can go to the next slide, just as an example of that. You can see that we do a public opinion survey that I can talk more about in advance of the long-range plans. And basically, the public were asked, you know, does your travel needs, are they met well or very well with the transportation system? And you can see the percentage of folks who agree with that statement has been increasing over the past several years. So next slide. So those are some of the successes. Of course, we have a number of challenges. These are just some data that we forecast through the year 2040, all of which will be a burden on our transportation system. VMT at the top there is vehicle miles traveled. That's expected to increase by about a third between now and 2040. Also, the freight tonnage, expected to increase by 37%, so just the stuff on trucks coming into the Port of Wilmington, et cetera. Then you can see some demographic changes in terms of employment growth, household growth, population growth through the region. And then the big one there at the bottom, population over the age of 65. We're a graying population here in the Wilmington region, and that's going to pose a challenge to our transportation system, how we design roads and how we design communities, really, to accept that larger, older population. Next slide. Again, this kind of gets at one of the key challenges that we have, and that's just that folks are really focused on driving alone to work as our primary mode. This is how folks get the job each day in the WOMAPCO region. You can see about 90% either drive alone or carpool. It's a very car-dependent region. Next slide. So it's kind of a challenge is how we change that setup from being just a drivable-only development geared to more walkable places in the region. Redeveloping existing communities is really the key challenge with that, instead of just developing in, you know, areas outside of where we have existing towns like Rising Sun. Climate change is a key challenge for the region, particularly some of our coastal communities in Delaware. The challenge with sea level rise. And financial shortfalls, you know, we just, as a country, really don't invest as much as we should in our infrastructure. And we're going to see some financial shortfalls in a graph coming up in Newcastle County. Next slide. This just gets to one of our public opinion survey questions that asks folks, you know, where do you think development should occur? So new development. And you can see the majority of folks say that it should be in existing towns and in places that are designated for growth. And Cecil County has done a really good job with this over the years, but our Newcastle County friends have not. Next slide. So our RTP overall has three broad and overlapping goals, and then within those goals, we have objectives and then actions within the objectives. So it's really structured hierarchically. We also have identified different potential performance measures to keep track of the progress of the long-range plan, again, through that Progress Report. Next slide. So we're just going to run through some of the goals that we have. The first one here is to support sustainable economic development and goods movement. And then inside that circle are the different objectives that we have for that goal. So maximizing our investments, developing effective transportation networks, and planning for energy security and climate change. Next slide. Next one is to efficiently transport people and some of the associated objectives there. Next slide. Then the third and final goal is to improve quality of life, which really gets at looking at the impact that the transportation system has on the environment and people. Next slide. So these are just some financial forecasts. After we get through that policy bit in the long-range plan, we have to come up with the projects that are going to be pursued between now and 2040. This is the financial forecast for Newcastle County. Pretty dreary, just sort of reflects some national trends that not really have as much money as we should to invest in capital projects. Next slide. In Cecil County, the story was a little bit better. Recently, there was a gas tax pass, as you guys know, in Maryland, and this has really helped push up the amount of money that will be available for capital projects in Cecil County. So I'm just going to go over some of the key projects here. Really difficult to read. You really have to take a look at your handout to see these. But these are the constrained projects that are under $15 million in service. You can see there's several of them. If you go to the next slide. And I'll mention that each of these has a number associated with it, so if you have your handout, you can basically take a look at those projects. If you can go back one. Basically, just in terms of Cecil County, the majority of the major projects that have funding are located along the I-95 corridor. Some of the key projects include widening of SR, or widening of I-95, and an extension of the MARC system to Elkton. And then there's a big interchange project in Elkton, Maryland 213, and US-40, which is a big bottleneck. So next slide. Next slide. And then we have a number of projects that are mapped out that are aspiration projects. These are projects that were identified by, you know, the counties and by the states as being in plans that we just couldn't find funding for because the projects that were on the previous maps took all the available funds up. So these are, again, maps in your handout that have some details associated with them in tables. And if you go to the next slide, we have even more of them. These are just bicycle pad and multimodal projects, so projects that don't just include roadway projects. Okay. Next slide. One more. Basically, we also have to show that the projects that we selected for funding do meet air quality standards. In Cecil County, the county is non-attainment for ozone. Basically, just have to run a computer model to show that they don't make the emissions worse, and I can talk more about that if anyone's interested, but we basically were able to demonstrate that they did not, and we met conformity. So final slide. Okay. This is just a chart that shows you where we are with our public involvement process. Basically, we're taking this presentation around to the different towns and civic groups in the WOMAPCO region and looking for feedback, feedback from the town, whether you think that, you know, certain projects should be on the list that aren't. Feedback in terms of policy recommendations. Do you think we're missing something, et cetera? And that feedback doesn't have to occur today, but we are going to be closing our public comment period in January on the 5th. Next slide. And just for more information and to download an actual copy of the report or the plan, you can go to that website, womapco.org/rtp, and it has much more detail than what I presented here tonight. There's my contact information there at the bottom. Feel free to shoot me an email, give me a call if you have a question. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you so much for coming. Next thing on the agenda is Resolution 2014-11, which is the expansion of the Arts Council, and that is Commissioner Warnock.
So I guess it was two meetings ago, we introduced and passed a resolution to create an Arts Council, and due to the great interest in it, we've already expanded it from three to five seats, or we're in the process of getting ready to, actually. So this is Resolution 2014-11, the creation and appointment of Town of Rising Sun Arts Council. Resolution concerning the expansion of the Arts Council made for the purpose of stimulating economic opportunities and to promote, cultivate, and sustain the arts for the people of Rising Sun, whereas the town located in Cecil County, Maryland, is a municipality organized under and governed by Article 23A of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and whereas the town is proclaimed as a perpetual entity with the right to pass laws, and whereas the Mayor and Commissioners wish to support the arts and have found other jurisdictions have used arts and entertainment to stimulate economic activities, and whereas they would like to expand the Arts Council to further the appointment of a committee chair and four other individuals to serve for staggered three-years terms, and whereas the Chair will serve until June 30th, 2018, and then be appointed July 1st, 2018, for three years thereafter, for three-year terms thereafter. There's actually, it says 2017 on the second line. Whereas, and whereas two members will serve until June 30th, 2017, and then be appointed July 1st, 2017, for three-year terms thereafter. And whereas two members will serve until June 30th, 2016, and then be appointed July 1st, 2016, for three-years terms thereafter. And now for be it resolved by the Mayor and Commissioners of the Town of Rising Sun, passed, approved, and adopted this resolution on 25th day of November, 2014. I motion that we move forward on this resolution.
A second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on Resolution 2014-11? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Under our business meeting items, there is a resignation letter that I will read into the record. It is to the Mayor and Board of Commissioners of Rising Sun. I am currently interested in serving on the Planning and Zoning Board in Rising Sun, and I am currently on the Ethics Committee and will resign from that committee if I was appointed to the Planning and Zoning Board. I appreciate your consideration in this matter. Pauline Braun. Ms. Braun has expressed her interest in getting more involved, and with the Ethics Board only meeting a minimal amount of times and the Planning and Zoning Board meeting more, she has expressed interest in joining the Planning and Zoning Board. And I've spoken to Commissioner Arthur Reeth, and he approves of this appointment.
Yes, Mayor, the Planning and Zoning Board members and Chairman Mummy have approved and vetted Ms. Braun for this position and recommend her appointment.
Okay. With that being said, I will, we will accept Mrs. Braun's resignation from the Ethics Board, and I would like to put her name forward for an appointment to the Planning and Zoning Board at this time. Can I get a motion to approve that appointment?
A motion, we install Ms. Braun to the Planning and Zoning Board.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Approves unanimously. I will say that we will miss you being on the Ethics Board, Ms. Braun. You did an excellent job serving on that committee, and we look forward to you serving on our Planning and Zoning Board. So welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next thing on the agenda is appointments for the Arts Council. And Commissioner Warnock, before I make these appointments, we'll explain to you a little bit if you want.
During the, at the time we created the Arts Council, we appointed a Chair. Ms. LaShire was appointed as the Chair of the Arts Council. And so one of the first tasks we gave her was to go out and find additional members to make up the remainder of the Arts Council. And she, being the overachiever that she was, came up with four people that have all expressed interests, so they've actually already started to meet and discuss the things they could do, but we want to formalize their appointment. So two of the positions will start as of tonight with their appointments and run through till June 30th of 2017, and the other two will start tonight and run through to June 30th of 2016. That means the first term is actually a little, they're a little longer than one year, two years, or three years. So the Chair's position is about three and a half years when it's all said and done, and then the two that are running till 2013 will be about 31 months, and then the 2016 will be about 19 months. So because we started about halfway through the year, it kind of resulted in, I didn't want to have their terms end next summer. It would be, you know, seven months in your, up for reappointment, so we made the initial terms a little longer, just to, I guess, let them get started and get established. And then, so, and for that matter, the members that are being appointed tonight, if they choose to put their name in for reappointment, that's, you know, certainly something that can happen in their respective terms. So with that, here's the list of names for each of the positions.
Thank you, Commissioner Warnock. And it is by my understanding that these have been approved by the Arts Commission Chairman. Is that correct? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and put forward the two names for, their term will end on June 30th, 2016, and that is Ms. Nikki Elkins and Ms. Haley Miller. We will put forward their names to approve to serve on the Rising Sun Arts Council. Can I get a motion to approve those appointments?
I motion.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Welcome. The next is the term limits, which will end on June 30th, 2017, and that is Ms. Melissa Hammond and Ms. Stephanie Watson. Can I get a motion to approve those appointments?
I so move. I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes. We welcome you to our Arts Council, and we look forward to the things that you will come up with into the new year. So we're excited to have you as part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next on our agenda is a legal update of legal bills, and that is Commissioner Warnock.
And so, Calvin, do you have the, Calvin?
Yeah, I'm looking.
Okay.
It's roughly about $3,800.
$3,800?
Yeah.
So, due to the ongoing litigation by former Mayor Fisher and Mr. Braun, we've incurred additional legal expenses that were outside of our budget. So we're, have to make a motion effectively to increase our budget to pay those legal bills. So I'd like to make a motion, is it $3,800?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we increase our legal bills budget by $3,800 to pay the legal bills incurred due to former Mayor Fisher.
I'll second that.
Just a discussion point, if anyone, does anyone have any discussion?
Just curious, do we have to, are we borrowing this from another, or taking it out of our savings account?
No, it wasn't budgeted, so we have to, in order to be properly, you know, paid, we need to increase our budget for this item to pay the bill.
Yeah, but like I said, that's my question, are we transferring?
This is money that we're losing for something else? I'm guessing that was my question.
As a general fund.
Yeah, it would be a realignment of monies, basically. Money that was allocated to other accounts would have to be set aside for this. And Commissioner Warnock, also to clarify, that's as of bills that we've gotten so far.
Okay.
The individual has continued to explore multiple ways to achieve this, so there could be more legal fees coming down the road.
Can I ask you how much we had? I don't remember at the time. I should note this, but how much we had allocated for legal before we went over?
We essentially took the position that, their last board took the position that they were relatively tired of budgeting money for this continuously, and they were under the impression that the legal issues were going to be behind them when they won, like, challenge number five there. And so essentially, there was no money budgeted for that.
Okay. All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. The next is the Cecil Bank Letter of Demand for Brian's Grace. This is our Town Administrator. Do you have that, Town Administrator?
Yes, I do. This is obviously a legal issue, so we're limited on how much we can go into, but essentially what this is, if you recall, we have the Brian's Grace Development was developed roughly back in 2003 and was completed by roughly 2006. As part of a land development project, a developer will put streets, streets and stormwater and sewer and water in the development to service it, and when the development is done, they dedicate that infrastructure to a municipality, in this case, the Town of Rising Sun. It is normal for a municipality to protect itself, in that case, essentially by stating that upon, there are letters of credit that a developer would have to put forth, which is typically 100% to 110% of the projected construction cost of the sewer water, stormwater, and streets. And the reason why the municipality does that is if the developer, for whatever reason, should not finish the project, you could have, you know, basically a torn-up field that has some stone in it, maybe some curbs, and the municipality at that time could decide to finish the road out. The municipality could decide that they're going to restore it back to field or whatever. So the money that you make a developer put up is to protect the town from the developer going back. going belly up on the project. The other thing that is done is imagine, we just spent, what, three-quarters of a million dollars last year on paving streets. So, imagine if the municipality gave the developer the approval to move forward with the project, took dedication on it, and then, within a year or two, the street caved in because of shoddy work. And so, you would require the developer, again, to put up letters of credit upon dedication to make sure that the taxpayers are protected from any catastrophic failure of that infrastructure. In this particular case, the Brian's Grace development has never been dedicated because the developer on, on record, for whatever reason, has chosen not to complete the punch list items put forth by the town of Rising Sun's engineer over the past couple of years. And that, this has been going on for roughly five years now, where we have been paying to have the engineer go out and do the inspections and write the same stuff up over and over again. In this particular case, the letter of credit for this development is held by Cecil Bank, a local bank here. And about, back in April, Cecil Bank notified us that they were basically going to declare the letter of credit null and void, because in their opinion, they could not understand why the town had not taken dedication on the development. And obviously, the town of Rising Sun took the position of, A, that's, that's not your decision to make, it's, it's our residents, and we protect our residents. So, we began to have some negotiations with Cecil Bank, because it is, it is a large amount of money that is still held in the letter of credit. But in all fairness, the town of Rising Sun, for what is estimated to be left on the project, does not need that much, all the remaining money that's in the fund. So, after trying to negotiate with the bank over the last couple of months, we did put forth an estimate. We spent money of our town engineer to go out and get estimates, and we tried to be fair and upfront about it. And we submitted that documentation to the bank roughly in July, and they basically have not responded. So, as provided for by law, what you have in front of you tonight is one, a legal memo, it's, it's not for public consumption at this point, a legal memo that would be sent to Cecil Federal, basically telling them that we are requesting to have that letter of credit charged or discharged to the town of Rising Sun. And then, what you would be voting on tonight would be the demand letter that would go under the signature of Mayor Marion, basically formally telling them that we expect to have that money deposited to the town of Rising Sun. And that money would be used to finish out this project. And I think it's important to tell residents what we're looking for here. When you go into that development, the road looks relatively okay, but, you know, from a, from a layperson's look. But when you get to the end of the cul-de-sac, if you're familiar with it, there's large amounts of water that collect back in that cul-de-sac, because it's not draining properly. The other thing is the, the last time we checked with the county, which admittedly was about two months ago, the developer has not completed the stormwater basin issues there. They have not signed off on the project either. And if you remember the issue, we ran into a summer hill in Keppel's Mill a couple of months back. This is what we're trying to avoid, is that kind of confusion of things slipping through the cracks. So, the county's been on the developer also. And then, the other item is, we have some concerns about the water and sewer lines, because although they were put in the street, we have no guarantee that the sewer and water lines were placed in accordance to the plan. And so, what is normal in a land development project is you have the developer come out and give you a survey and say that the pipe, you know, obviously, the pipe is running down the middle of the street, but does the pipe have the right pitch to allow the water to flow? Does it make some kind of change around a giant rock or something? Those are all things that you might think, oh, that's not going to happen, but that's why we protect ourselves. And so, that money would be used to make sure that the depressions in the cul-de-sacs are fixed, that the sewer and water and stormwater lines are properly televised to make sure that they are up to snuff, because at the end of the day, five years from now, if there's an issue, it's going to be the taxpayers of Rising Sun that are going to have to fix those things. So, I want to make sure that everybody understands that. This really is a watershed moment here, because everybody in this room has talked about how development has taken advantage of the town of Rising Sun over the years. And this is just one of several efforts by this board to stand up and say they're not going to tolerate it anymore. So, that's what you have before you.
So, I'm asking for the board's approval on this? Is that correct?
Yes, to send the letter of demand under your signature.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion regarding the letter?
I just have one question, just for clarification. Is there a homeowners association?
Yes, who is?
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of sending this letter?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Town administrator, I will sign that after the meeting.
Okay.
Moving forward into citizens' input, there are no speakers tonight. Would anyone like to speak this evening? Hearing none. We will move forward, and I'm actually going to make a change. Let's go ahead and let's do the financials. Ms. Wagner, is that okay with you? Okay.
Yeah. Commissioner Warnock threw me a curveball.
Sorry, I was muting the speaker, so we wouldn't hear the mouse clicks.
We doing the governmental first?
Yes.
Okay.
So, if you open up your book, the first page will be the title page to the governmental, behind the little red sticker, and then, you have the letter, the report. And we'll go to page three, which is the assets, liabilities, and fund balance. As you can see, we have $488,481.95 of cash in the checking accounts, and in the MLP, we have $28,564.47. We have investments of $94,000, and we have restricted cash of $75,523.54. And I got an email from Calvin, I believe it was yesterday, that this restricted cash is going to be released.
That is correct.
Okay. And, because this is as of the end of October, so that will show up in the November financial statements, once we see that happen. We have receivables of taxes and service charge of $371,000, due from the state of $6,290, due from water of $33,000, and then, we have some other little receivables of $11,000. We have total assets of $1,011,0147.4. We have accounts payable of $8,960, and we have due to proprietary fund, which is, we owe the proprietary fund $335,676.60. And we have unrestricted of $765,510.28. Does anybody have any questions about the balance sheet? We'll turn to the next page, which is page four. You will see that we have real estate taxes of $825,000, and then, some other various taxes and service charges to total revenue of $1,076,429.73. We have spent $557,543.26. And we have a positive fund balance of $518,886.47. And you have to realize, that money has to get us through the rest of the year, because we collect our income mainly at the beginning of the year. Any questions with regard to the statement of revenue expenditures? The next, you will see the supplemental information, and you will see each of the funds on page six, seven, and eight, budget to actual. So, you'll be able to see how the general services, police, planning and zoning, public works is doing, and that's on page six. And then, if you go to the next page, you will see streets and sidewalks, solid waste, parks and recreation, debt services. And then, on the very last page, you will see the disaster response and the total. So, right now, standing, we are running about $21,000 over the budget, from budget to actual, so that is good. And we're running about $8,584.54 under expenditures right now, aggregate total. And if you go down the variance column, you can see the various different, which ones are running over and which ones are running under. So, in comparison, we are positive to the budget by $7,959.13 overall, the net effect. Any questions about budget to actual? You go to the little blue tab, and that's the proprietary, which is the water and the sewer. And then, you will come to the statement of net assets, and you will see the water, and you will see the sewer, and then, you will see the total of those. So, among the total, we have, I'll give Calvin a minute to catch up, $329,381.8 of cash and cash equivalent. And in the MLGIP, it's $1,573,297.52. And this is kind of our backup of what we use, you know, because the water and the sewer have a large infrastructure. As you go farther down, you'll see that we have $120,000 worth of service charges receivable, and we have due to the water and sewer. There is a due-to, due-from between the water and sewer of $529,521.54. We have the restricted cash that's sitting in the PNC of $4,456,413.72. And between water and sewer, we have capital assets of $17,99,103.32, and then, we depreciated $2,975,000. So, our total assets are $21,469,225.89. Then, you'll see the other side of the due-to, due-from, and then, due to the government, due to the state for the bay restoration, and then, we have the liability of $14,208,863.10. And that's mainly the sewer project. So, we have unrestricted assets here of $2,315,243.6. We go to the next page, page four, and you will see that the total revenue for the water and sewer is $403,063.92. And this, you'll see, keep going up each month. It's not like the government, where we recognize it all pretty much at the beginning of the year. We have spent so far, $275,000. We are positive, $127,000. So, we are doing pretty good in the water and the sewer. And if you want to, you can go to page six, after the supplemental. You will see the water by itself, budget to actual, and the sewer by itself. And then, we'll go to the final page, which is page eight, and you will see that we're pretty well, very close right on with the service charges. We are under about $5,370, and we have spent less than we were planning, $116,274.17. And these are pretty much, I would say, the largest area is contract services of $38,000. And then, we have the payroll is running under budget. So, any questions there? Okay. Well, if you ever have any questions, you know I have a very open door. Just come right by.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Chief Peterson.
During the period of October 28th to November 25th, we responded to approximately 501 calls for service. During that time, there has been no notable trends. Nothing of extreme interest can be reported. A few things that I would like to cover tonight is, one, the police department has undergone a thorough cleaning. Some items have been reorganized and painted, and it looks like a totally different office. It actually has improved the demeanor of some of the employees that use it on a daily basis. So, as a board, if you get time, stop down and take a look at the work that was done there. You may be surprised and pleased. Second, in light of the events in Ferguson, Missouri, and other events around the state and in the country, I thought about our police department growing as officers, improving their ability to deal with the public. So, I've arranged for them to have a little sensitivity training. That sensitivity training is going to take the form of a trip to Washington, DC, and a tour of the Holocaust Museum. I hope in that it will open the eyes of some of the officers and improve, you know, the way that they communicate with the public and view different segments of the public. Next, we, as a department, have joined with all of the other county agencies for this year's Shop with a Cop. If you could, Calvin, I sent you a web address. It's shopwithacopcc.com is the website that has all of the law enforcement agency from Cecil County combined together to conduct this year's Shop with a Cop. So far, we've raised approximately $12,000 to facilitate that program. If you have the opportunity, take a look at the website. You can make some donations there. The program assists with the underprivileged youth in the county. From, you know, toddlers up to the age of approximately 11 will be parts of the program. So, if anyone is interested in donating, they can go to that website and make a donation. You can also earmark that donation specifically for the youth that we choose from the town of Rising Sun. Over the last month, we have also taken on the project of Project Child Safe. This provides free gun locks to anyone in the area to provide gun safety in your homes. Maryland law does require that if you own a gun, it should be in a safe and locked place. Instead of going out and buying expensive locks, feel free to stop into the police department, and we will give you locks for free. And lastly, we received the resignation of one of the officers in the police department not long ago, and since then, we have drafted a job announcement that will be going out and the local press within the next few days to fulfill that, or backfill that position. With that being said, that is my report, unless there's questions.
I just wanted to say, Chief, thank you for all the effort that you put into in refreshing the police department side. It looks fantastic. I know that you've put in some sweat labor yourself in getting it looking the way it has. It's, it's been, I think, 13, 14 years, and it's much needed, so it looks fantastic there. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Town administrator, do you have your report?
Yes, I do. In your packets.
In your packets, you have, what I did is I, as you know, I send you folks weekly updates of the things that the staff is doing. And just, I think every once in a while, it might be nice to, you know, update the residents of the community to see some of the things that are going on from a staff standpoint. So I have these up on the screen. I apologize if you can't see them. The board has some of them already. The 44th Annual Carol Singh, our staff is putting a lot of time into organizing that. You probably saw them outside today decorating the town hall and putting lights up. There's a lot of organization with the Ladies Auxiliary of the Fire Department and the Lions Club to hand out cookies and cider and stuff like that. A reminder to folks that the town hall will be closed Thursday and Friday of this week. We've also, people, to give you a little bit of an insight, every once in a while, we do have staff meetings here. In our last staff meeting, we decided that the best way to organize and to be efficient is to have department head meetings on a weekly basis and then get the entire staff together maybe every two months to talk about some things. The meetings are very productive. It really is a give or take. People get to give insight into the field of expertise. The other thing that came up that a lot of folks might not realize, but Cecil County was entertaining the idea of a noise ordinance regulating trash haulers that pick up trash in the morning. And we're familiar with that because we get a lot of complaints from the residents who live in and around the middle school. And we have to remind the trash hauler every once in a while, even though we do not regulate that trash pickup because we only provide pickup for residential properties. It does happen to be the same hauler we use, so we are rather effective in letting them know that they can't pick up the dumpsters at four or five o'clock in the morning and slam them around and wake everybody up. But it's obviously a problem throughout the county. And this might be an ordinance that the board may want to consider adopting in the future to do this. We attend meetings on a regular basis here, along with the elected body, the Greater Rising Sun Chamber. We all attended an economic development seminar. The other thing that we're doing is we're meeting with the town engineer to, after the holiday, after the Thanksgiving holiday, with Commissioner Arthur Reath and then Commissioner Walker, to discuss with the town engineer ways to start putting a strategic plan for replacement of streets and sidewalks, and then some water lines in town that are long overdue being replaced. So there's a lot of planning that takes place with that so that we could jump, you know, get on the stick right away in the springtime. A reminder to people, your yard waste is picked up by our public works employees every Monday, so that's something that you see. Our public works employees are the ones who empty the trash cans at the park on a regular basis. There's a lot of storm drains in town that we get our public works personnel get out ahead of time to open up the grates and start cleaning some of those storm drains out so that when we get that heavy snow and the water runoff, it has someplace to go. There's been some interior cleaning up of some things in town hall that the mayor spoke about. We replaced some defective lights in the second floor hallway, assembled some cabinets and a table, went through all the Christmas decorations, and Lord knows, the town has accumulated a ton of Christmas decorations over the years. So every year, we got to go through them and sort them out. There's still grass that needs to be cut at town hall. The grass is still growing. There's the town pavilion. Our four guys keep the pavilion clean and try to stay ahead of leaves, leaves down at the parks. I don't know if anybody noticed, but out by Sun Pharmacy for about a three-week period, there was a pile of leaves that just spun and spun and spun by the parking lot. They got so thick that it would almost trip you when you were walking down the street. So we got our guys out there to clean that up. The other, there's some maintenance that's done here at town hall that our public works guys do. And when you see the town lights are turned different colors in town for different causes, that's our public works crews that make the fancy little homemade attachments to change the lights a different color. And then, of course, comes the time spent taking the gels out. And that's what they are. They are gels. In addition, our public works guys are filling potholes and such and such in the town. Commissioner Arthur Reath has invited folks to contact him with any type of potholes and street issues, and our public works guys are the ones that follow up on that. This is an older building. We have older streetlights, so we're continually replacing those streetlights in town or doing some electrical repairs. We replaced a driveway apron on 49 Pearl Street that I know Commissioner Arthur Reath was really anxious to get that replaced, and so was the property owner. Our water tower, you, like any other large body of water, we have to worry about it freezing, believe it or not. There's a lot of piping underneath the tower, so our guys have to get in there every year and maintain those heaters to make sure that we're not going to have any issues. Our public works guys are the ones that also hand out public notices to residents. And our most recent notice was we had a 36-inch storm water pipe break over in Keppel's Mill running between the houses. And if you think about it, a 36-inch pipe, if you look at the table where the elected body is sitting at, that's basically the size of a 36-inch pipe. So imagine the amount of water that goes down that pipe. That unfortunately is another budgetary item that we're going to have because the costs to get that fixed are coming in really high. So I'll be coming to you in the near future with requests for that. We dug up that area. If you remember, at the special meeting we had on November 12th, we showed some pictures of that. We went and we televised the line to see exactly how bad the damage was. And fortunately, it was only a 100-foot section that's bad, but that's still a lot of money that we have to pay for that. The police went over the public safety issues and planning, building, planning and zoning. There's a lot of stuff that happens that, you know, you as the resident see the final product, like Hibbert's, coming in the sporting goods store, but there's always a lot of inquiries. For instance, Spicer's Cycle Shop on West Main Street is up for sale. So we're starting to get a lot of contacts from different folks interested in the site and wanting to know what they could do with that piece of property. Dr. Brandonberg's property is another one that's attracting a lot of interest. The Old Martin Shopping Center or the New Martin Shopping Center where the Hibbert's Sporting Goods stores at, we allowed them to operate under one water meter for a while there. But now that we have a second tenant in there, our guys had to go in and put a second water meter in there so that we could properly track the water usage there. The town has had a lot of sidewalk issues. I mean, let's face it, very similar to the sewer plant taking a long time to get fixed and the cost building on it. So have our streets and sidewalks. The town has been strapped financially with some of these big financial infrastructure repairs. And one that's looming out there is our streets and sidewalks. And when you think about it, the town just spent 3/4 of a million dollars paving streets, but it was probably, you know, maybe only 15% of the total number of streets and sidewalks that had to be done were paid for with that 3/4 of a million dollars. So we've got a long way to go, but we can't, you know, do it willy-nilly. We've got to put a plan together, a placement plan, so that's what we're going to be doing. The Planning Commission has been meeting at least once a month, sometimes more than that, because as we talked earlier about the problems the town has had with developers taking advantage of the town, a lot of that comes from our land development codes that are not up to snuff, that have allowed these developers to proceed with their developments in a certain manner. So the Planning Commission has met probably about 10 times over the last year, and it's been putting a lot of effort into redoing a subdivision code that will better protect the town and make sure that development proceeds in a proper manner. In addition to that, we have a zoning code that we've always talked about is really out of date and discombobulated, so we're constantly trying to sort that out to make sure that we don't have any issues with that. The RFP for Economic Development and Community Revitalization Study, that went out on November 2nd. The bids are due December 30th. There is a pre-bid meeting to be held on Wednesday, December 3rd at 11:00 a.m., and that's basically where interested bidders can come in and ask questions collectively as a group and get the answers collectively as a group. So that's an exciting thing that's happened. Sewer and water, again, this is our public works people. We have replaced five fire hydrants in town over the last month and a half, so that's good for fire protection. The most recent one was on Louise Court. Unfortunately, we also have to hand out shut-off notices, and that's what our public works crews do. There are some vacant properties in town where the water needs to be shut off to them. They also get to sneak in an unscheduled water main break every once in a while, which creates a lot of turmoil, and they just recently did one on Pearl Street. The sewer plant, the existing sewer plant, there are UV lights there that have to be cleaned on a regular basis, testing that has to be done. We've also had that reoccurring issue with brown water popping up in some of our areas that have very small water lines. This is all a refresher to some, but the town has roughly 10,000 lineal feet of 4-inch water line in town, which is an issue for the town, both from a fire protection standpoint and clear water. It's not a water quality issue as much as you just don't want to see brown water coming out of your spigot. And that's caused by undersized water lines left over from way back in the day. We got a, we wrote a grant to try to get them replaced in 2009. The estimated cost of that replacement was $1.9 million back in 2009 to replace those water lines. So again, when you put that in perspective to what the accountant is putting up on the screen, you start to see why it takes us a little bit of time to get some of these repairs made because we almost have to pick our poison of what we're going to try to fix at any given time. The utility billing, our staff is the one that prepares the billing. That goes out at the end of the month. A reminder to everybody, the sewer and water rates increased 6% this year. This is as part of the overall infrastructure financing plan that was approved back in 2009. The big difference was the original plan called for a 21% increases over the first four years. Now it settles down into a 6% increase. So the worst of it is over in terms of trying to raise that enormous amount of money to pay for this infrastructure stuff. The sewer plant project, Commissioner Walker's been very busy. We recently settled on PNC interim financing. That's significant because the town will save a lot of money in its annual or quarterly payments to PNC because we basically originally had a $13 million loan that we were paying that 13, interest on that $13 million over a two-year amortization schedule. USDA essentially agreed to take the $8 million that we already borrowed from PNC and absorb that into their financial structure. And now we're paying interest on $8 million over a 40-year period as opposed to interest on $8 million over a two-year period. So that will help the town with cash flow, which helps us to do some of those projects above. There was a lot of work involved in going to settlement on both the USDA and PNC financing. The board can see the individual breakdown. And then last but not least is finance. I give you all the, you know, the scary stuff above. Just in the last month alone, the town has written over $800,000 in bills here between the sewer and the water. And I want to emphasize what Ms. Wagner said. On the general fund side, we collect all of that real estate revenue in July because you know as a resident, you get a 2% reduction in your real estate tax if you pay that bill by the end of July, I guess it is. Probably 90% of our residents do that. And so that means we get all that money upfront, and so it needs to last the rest of the year. So there's just a little breakdown of what's going on from the financial side. So that's a one-month snapshot of what goes on with the town staff on a monthly basis.
Thank you, Town Administrator. Do we have a historical preservation commission report tonight? I don't think we do. The one thing I will say is stop by, which was, I guess, Western Auto, and look in their window. They have a beautiful Christmas decorations up over there. So stop by and walk through that window display and check out the historical commissions, a little bit of taste of the Rising Sun Museum over there, so.
And thanks to Mr. and Mrs. Mummy, Mr. and Mrs. Gibney, and Ms. Joanne Jameson for decorating that on Sunday.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. I'm going to move into my report. I'll try to keep it brief. We did miss a meeting because of the Veterans Day holiday. Speaking of Veterans Day, myself and Commissioner Scully, a big thank you to her for attending a Veterans Day celebration at the Legion. I spoke a little bit there and thanked our veterans for everything that they have done for us. It was a great event, and we had a lot of fun. So thank you for attending with me. I met with Conawingo Elementary School, and I'm going to be promoting at Conawingo Elementary School as well as that Rising Sun Elementary School, a If I Were Mayor essay contest. And I'm really excited to go and talk to the kids there. Conawingo Elementary wants me to come and spend a couple of days and read to the kids in the library, so I'm excited about bonding with Conawingo Elementary School. They have vocalized to me that, you know, Conawingo is kind of in an outlying area. It's almost a village of sorts. They don't really have someone that they bond with as far as an elected official, and they have offered for myself to be that elected official, so I have accepted, and I will be doing some things with them. So a big thank you to the principal there and to the vice principal for reaching out to me and wanting to get Rising Sun involved. I also will entertain having them come up here and check out town hall and let them post some of the kids' artwork that they have done, but I'm excited to have them as part of the Rising Sun community as well. November is municipal government month. I did put a proclamation forward in honor of Municipal Government Month. It is downstairs in the lobby. We do this to be a part of MML's Banner City Town Program, so it is downstairs at this time. As well as I've asked the elected body, you may see downstairs in the lobby, there are pledges underneath our official portraits. Those pledges are in honor of the No More Campaign. At the beginning of this month, I asked Commissioner Scully if I could promote the No More Campaign, which is putting an end to domestic violence and sexual assault. Many of you may have seen the commercials that they have during football programs or just during the evening news where they'll say, you know, they'll have different celebrities promoting the No More Campaign. There's information down there about the different types of domestic abuse, and Commissioner Scully will go more into what Rising Sun is doing to promote the No More Campaign and to help put an end to domestic violence. But the most important thing is, is, in my mindset, is don't keep it hidden. Speak to someone, seek help. There are resources that are downstairs in our lobby that you can reach out to. Let's help say no more to domestic abuse and sexual assault. On that note, I had someone reach out to me who is a representative for Erin Moran. Erin Moran wrote this book. It's called An Unimaginable Act. And what this is about is actually child sexual assault. This young lady was assaulted at the age of seven years old by a family friend, and the assault continued, and then she ended up moving away and getting assaulted again. But what she is trying to do is pass in the state of Maryland a law that would be very similar to what they teach kids in school for stop, drop, and roll. This would teach kids to stand up and tell if someone has treated them inappropriately at home or at school or anywhere. I think this is kind of common sense. That's what I told the representative today, and I am happy to put forward my name in support of Erin's law. I will speak more about it at the next town meeting, but Pennsylvania just was one of the recent states that passed it this past June, joining 22 other states. And hopefully, we will get Maryland on the agenda to pass this as well. I did attend a mayor's drug task force meeting. This was my first meeting of the mayor's drug task force. I did ask Commissioner Scully to attend with me as well because she is public safety commissioner. Her insight was very helpful at that time, and I'm hopeful that she will also tag along with me to attend other drug task force meetings. I'm in the mindset that just because I am mayor, there are many things that I may not think of, and that's why I have a very supportive elected body, and I rely on them to give me advice, and I welcome their input as well. I also attended the Cecil County Economic Development Forum this past Thursday with Commissioner Warnock and Town Administrator Bonnberger. They, one of the things that they promoted was shopping in Main Street, and there were different grant opportunities and loan programs through the state of Maryland that the Cecil County Economic Development Forum... through the state of Maryland that the Cecil County Economic Development Forum put forward. I think one of the things that we have to deal with in our town is we do have a set of people that necessarily aren't as motivated as I personally would like to see them be with getting involved in updating the look of their buildings. We will be moving forward with some type of property maintenance code in the coming months. I will be talking with the board members once the administration department gets done with the property maintenance code, and we will probably have a meeting to explain that, but that is definitely something that is on our agenda and I think is core to moving Rising Sun towards the future. If we want to have a sustainable Main Street, if we want to have an attractive area for businesses to come, I think that this will probably be one of the first steps that we are going to have to move forward with. I know I've spoken to some of you about this already, and you've, I've gauged your support on it. I also met with the Rising Sun High School in promoting different activities with them this month, and I wanted to remind everyone on November the 29th to shop small. This is Small Business Saturday coming up. Try out one of our local eateries, stop by and get a unique gift at Sun Pharmacy, or check out our new sports store Hibbits. Shopping small helps all of us and helps our community a lot, so take that into account this Saturday. I did want to say on an ending note that the Perryville Food Kitchen is collecting non-perishable food. The Perryville Food Kitchen helps the Rising Sun community as well as other members of the Cecil County community in feeding those that are in need. You can stop by the Rising Sun Herald and drop off non-perishable food at any time and to help support the Perryville Food Kitchen. So, with that being said, I am going to turn it over to, well, first we'll say, is there any old business on the agenda? Hearing none, is there any new business? We'll move forward into Commissioner comments. Before I turn it over to Commissioner Althanreth, I wanted to thank you for your insight with some of the issues that we've had with streets repairing and sidewalk repair. You've done a great job with putting together a spreadsheet to get our Public Works crew on task to complete some of these repairs. So, thank you very much for doing that, Commissioner Althanreth.
Like you were saying, Mayor, we, the, Jane wrote an article in the Cecil Wig a while back about that, and it was, there was good response, and it wasn't overwhelming, but I did create, for everybody to know, that that has been put into a spreadsheet of when I was contacted, who contacted me, what they were looking for, and a status of it. So, if nothing has happened yet, just bear with us. We are going into early cold weather this year, and it does slow the progress. Not to mention, you know, big jobs like the stormwater pipe that failed down at Kepler's Mill that took our Public Works guys all their time there, and then, you know, of course, a water pipe break over on Pearl Street. So, continue to send those to me in emails and stuff, and we have them compiled so that they don't get forgotten, and you can update them. And as far as streets and sidewalk work, those are really the two things that have been taken up most of the time since our last meeting, were those two big jobs, and they were unexpected, large expenses that are going to cause us to, you know, have to make some more readjustments in our budget. So, on, that's about all I have on streets and sidewalks. On planning and zoning, like I said, we want to welcome Pauline to our board, and our next meeting will be December 15th, and that meeting will be at 6:30. We've moved those meetings up a little bit, because, as Calvin mentioned, we've been working on a new zoning ordinance that we've been working on since back in the spring, I think, somewhere around eight, you know, meeting once a month, and it's been very large, very comprehensive, but we're getting near the end of it. And starting later puts us here late at night on a Monday night, and so that next meeting will be at 6:30 if anyone wants to attend. So, other than that, I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving to you and all your families, and it's good to see a lot of people here tonight, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Althanreth. Commissioner Scully, the one thing I did forget to add with the No More Campaign is, you may see these lapels that I've asked the elected body to wear. Commissioner Scully also asked the police department to support this campaign, and they are all wearing lapels as well in support of No More. So, with that said, I'll go. Commissioner Scully?
One of the things that I wanted to do upon being pointed to this position is bring awareness to domestic violence and addiction, and I'm happy to say that we launched our Facebook page, which is sponsored by the mayor and the commissioners. Rising Above Domestic Violence and Addiction is the name of the Facebook page, and I encourage everyone to join the page and share it with friends. The geography of it is not as important as long as the messages get out there, but it is something that is intended to bring awareness to these issues in our community. And just reminding people, the timing of this is important, because as we approach the holidays, that's when some of these issues can escalate, and we certainly don't want, as we know, the stigma associated with both domestic violence in a home or addiction with family members can mean that most people suffer in silence and don't talk about it, and we want to make sure that as our families go into the holidays, be it Thanksgiving and the time between now and the next holiday, that, that we provide them with support and let them know that they're not alone. And I do appreciate everyone's participation in putting that site together and reviewing content and helping brainstorm with the name. So, I appreciate every, the entire board's support and the staff on that, because I'm very excited about it. So, I just hope, ask everybody to join it and review the content and share it with your family and friends.
Thank you, Commissioner Scully. Commissioner Walker?
The sewer plant construction is proceeding very nicely. Calvin and I attended the meeting last Monday at the sewer plant with USDA, and things are going along very well. I'm very optimistic that we're going to meet our deadlines on the completion of that project. I would also like to repeat, it's a big deal, this eight million, little over $8 million that USDA has taken over from our PNC loan. It's a big deal, because the amount of the interest that we have to pay has been significantly reduced. I just wanted to repeat that, and I know Town Administrator Bonnenberger spent a lot of time in getting that settled with USDA and getting them to pay PNC $8 million of the $13 million that we've borrowed. We still have $5 million available from PNC to complete the construction of the sewer plant. Hopefully, we won't have to borrow all of that $5 million to do it, but if we do, we have that available to us, so we don't have to worry about financing our sewer project. It's taken care of. Other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Thank you, Commissioner Walker. I will say that, you know, sewer and water probably won't be the most glamorous job, but you definitely put a lot of effort into working hard on this department, and I thank you for all the time that you spend. There's a bunch of meetings that you have to attend, so thank you so much for moving forward with that. It's definitely the most, in my mind, the most important infrastructure project we have, so thank you. Commissioner Warnock?
Yeah, so there's some, actually, the, as the weather's been turning and such, there's a lot of progress being made in town. It's maybe a little bit not, I mean, between sewer plants that aren't, that are kind of out of sight and out of mind and, you know, trail work and such, but I guess the Arts Council has been getting underway, and I suppose one of the things we'll probably have to look to do is add a Arts Council report to the agenda. Ms. LaShear, if you wanted to report tonight, I'll yield some time to you real quick to give an Arts Council report. Right now's fine.
Well, I just wanted to thank, first, thank everyone for their support and for the appointment of, for Mayor Fisher, I mean, Mayor, Mayor Marion. I know, I'm getting kicked down now. Really, well, you know, I'm used to the name, anyway. Mayor Marion. I'll never, ever live that down. But...
Thank you for your report.
I'm a little nervous, okay? I just wanted to say that the committee members that are on the Rising Sun Arts Council Committee, they are an extremely hardworking bunch of people. We have met every week for the last three weeks, and we will continue to meet every week until we get everything underway. There's a lot of the business end of the Arts Council that we're working on now. We're establishing bylaws. We're trying to design a logo that we can place on our Facebook page and imprint and things like that. We have come up with a lot of really great ideas for the town. We are actually working on our 2015-2016 event calendar for the town, which is exciting. I spoke with Vince Sammons. We've been working on trying to get some type of art venue at Sun Fest this year. Right now, I just wanted to say that we are looking for, to build relationships with the businesses in Rising Sun. We are looking to network with artists and creative people that want to get involved with the Arts Council. So, we're very busy, and we have some really good things in store for the town to bring for your guys' approval, and we should probably have, I would say, in the next, we're not meeting this week because of Thanksgiving, but I would say in the next two weeks, we are probably going to be able to, to bring some event ideas to you guys. So, just thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. LaShear.
And I do, I do apologize.
Thank you for that update. I had the pleasure of meeting with the Arts Council on Sunday, and I could sense the enthusiasm and, and the energy in the short period of time, you know, since I showed up late and then left early. But just in that short period of time I was there, I, I could sense the enthusiasm and the, I could see the good ideas brewing, and I look forward to what you bring to us. And the reason I showed up late and left early was because I was building trails all day, and then I had to go meet with the Historic Commission decorating the window, so it wasn't anything directed at the Arts Council. Just a lot going on in one day. We had our, we've actually signed off on all of our beneficiary paperwork with the Boy Scouts. So, the two projects over at the Dog Park and the project over at Veterans Park should be moving forward. Weather permitting, they'd like to get out and start digging holes probably in about two or three weeks. So, weather permitting, because it's gotten a little colder a little earlier this year than expected, as usual it seems like. But the, I think there's going to be a third Boy Scout coming into the project at the Dog Park. They've, they've got an additional member they're going to bring in, because the project, I think, is a little bigger than the two of them can readily handle by the, I mean, it's a pretty big effort there. They've got to build a bridge, a large educational platform, and about 80 feet of boardwalk, so it's, it's a pretty big effort there that they're going to be undertaking. The, over at Veterans Park, we've done a lot of exploration work over there now that we can get through the brush, and we have a pretty good idea of where we're going to take our trail through. There's a couple issues that we're trying to work out, and then we're also, I'm working on trying to schedule a meeting with the county on the railroad right-of-way portion of it. There's actually a trail blazed over there. It's probably a little muddy today, given recent weather, but we've got from the entrance just about back to the property line blazed. So, we're working on getting a surface down hopefully here soon, maybe before, either if the ground freezes, we'll try and get it down while it's frozen, or, you know, somehow get the stone back there to start putting our trail in place. As the mayor already pointed out, we went to an economic development forum in Elkton. The, what I would add to out of that is there's a couple of things that we're going to be moving forward on, the Sustainable Community Designation, which I've already seen some commentary on that. The Sustainable Community Designation is about economic sustainability. So, any other commentary on that, I, I hope that we can kind of correct that and get people to understand that this isn't necessarily what they think it is. The Main Street, Maryland program is another designation we'd like to look into. So, there's some steps to, to be included in all of these programs, and once we're in these programs, there's all kinds of opportunities that open up to the town of Rising Sun, such as facade improvement programs and other Main Street-type programs, so we can start to look at working on our economic development re- revitalization. We're also, I also talked to a representative from, and I know I'm going to get this one wrong. There was the America Small Business, I can't remember the name. Yeah, they, America's Small Business Development Center, because it's their third name in like three months or something, so. But, talked to them about, once we kind of get the, the right space and place and such, that we'll start trying to hold forums, maybe at the library or something, for people that are interested in starting a small business. We'd be able to come out and talk about financing opportunities and, and talk with professionals that can help them, kind of guide them in the way of starting a small business. I've actually attended similar programs in Bel Air probably, probably 18 years ago, and I found that program to be very beneficial. So, another interesting thing, I met with Rupert Rosetti from the Octo-Rare Watershed. He's a great guy. We've worked with a lot of, a lot of the projects here lately. And one of the projects over at Veterans Park is a bridge over the stormwater runoff from the, from a lot of areas of town, like the Baseball Diamonds up through Route 274 and, and some of that area up there, and we're looking at some ways to try and reduce some of that stormwater runoff to alleviate some of the flooding in the park. Anybody that's been around Veterans Park on a good rainy day knows that that, I mean, it basically overwhelms the bridge. So, we're looking at, some of the majority of the water's actually coming down from that area, a lot of it off of 274, and the state needs to try and eliminate some of that water runoff off of their roadways. So, we're hoping to be able to work with them to try and manage some of that stormwater a little better. And I guess that's pretty much all I have for this time. So, thank you.
I will say that Commissioner Warnock, when he says "we," the majority of the time has been spent by Commissioner Warnock blazing some of these trails, especially down at Veterans Community Park. He has been covered at certain times in brush and debris, and his Jeep reeks of outside and nastiness, so a big thank you to him for all the effort that he has put down. If you see his black Jeep down there in the park, that's probably him down there.
You don't have to call the police when you see my car down there.
If you see it down there.
Thanks for looking out for the parks, though.
Yeah. With that being said, I did want to make a brief comment that I've had a few people that have contacted me, and I've passed off their different opinions to the different departments. My job as mayor is almost as a facilitator. It is to pass off, if it's under Commissioner Scully's department for public safety, or Commissioner Althanreth with Streets and Sidewalks, or Commissioner Warnock with Parks and Recreation. I do my best at keeping them involved and passing on information that they may need to reach out to citizens with. So, if it's not out of disrespect that I don't respond sometimes, it's that I pass it on to the proper person, and they'll make sure that it gets fixed. With that being said, before we motion to adjourn, I am going to ask the board to join me in a brief executive meeting at the end of this meeting. Commissioner Walker is going to need a brief period of time to take his wife home, so I'm going to say we will adjourn at 7:45 downstairs.
I don't need any time.
No? Okay. We'll go ahead and adjourn. I guess she's walking, Commissioner Walker. I guess you're walking home. We will adjourn after this meeting into a brief executive meeting to discuss personnel. So, with that being said, I will ask for a motion to adjourn, please.
I motion, we adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes. Thank you.